For votes to enter in the executive session for remains Freedom of Access Act. The public also has the right to review any of the materials created or received by the board that relate to the board's deliberation, unless state makes that document confidential. Quorum today, we have Penny and we have Don, Penny Chair, Penny Carlin. You know, Hafeth on Zoom, virtue. And I'm Tom, Comichello, and I'm the chair. What we've done just with the audience, instead of doing the public meeting first that we were going into, we're going to do the work session, which we have an application. So we're going to do that quickly and then come back to the public, the public meeting and do that. The agenda tonight includes receiving the following items. It's basically one item that we have. It's an application made by Sarah and Brian Carey, 153 Court Street, Tax Mac 25, Lot 05. The application seeks a permit to construct 314 square foot addition to their home on the southeastern side of the structure and the structure of the 400 square foot gardens, garden shed. This project is being referred to the planning board in accordance with Article 5, Section 5.44 and Item 1.3. For planning board procedure, the work session will conclude no later than 5:30 unless the board votes to extend the time. Procedure for each application, the board will discuss the application. No action will be taken on any application at this work session. Neither the applicant nor the public has a right to speak. However, in its sole discretion, the board may ask questions of the applicant and solicit comments from the public. All persons addressing the board should first state their names.
Great partner. I'm working with Brian and Sarah Carey on his property. Yeah, the project is basically 314 square foot covered porch. Off the back of the house right now, there's a deck there in that, in that general area. So it'd be super useful to have and use year round, you know, use throughout the year. That's one part of it. And then they're going to, they'd like to build just a storage shed also. And actually, since we've put the application in, we had listed the storage shed as 400 square feet. It's actually smaller than that. 364 square feet. But it, I don't know the exact location of the shed at the moment, but we're well within all the setbacks and calculations and all that. And I have big drawings here if anyone wants to look through. That's helpful.
Sean, it's coming in front of us. It states because of Article 5, Section 5.45, you can see the change.
Yeah, Item 13, which states construction or expansion of structures and changes of use in the source water protection overlay. This property is one of those properties that was placed within source water protection overlay zone two, where the lines were just kind of drawn in right angles across the board. But if you look at where the property sits, it actually sits downhill from our water source, which it used to be lateral to our water sources because we had wells on that Spring Street lot down here at the end of Port Street. So when the ordinance was written, we actually had wells there lateral from where the Carey property is. But then since in the meantime, the wellhead has been moved up to the north side of Port Street. So, but by the ordinance, we can't apply the ordinance as it might be or as it possibly should be, but we have to apply the ordinance as it's written. So that's the reason why it's coming to freedom.
Four, I really question.
We, I'm assuming the shed won't have the foundation, or will it?
I don't know. We're going to just essentially do sort of this on, right?
It'll be a slab or?
Yeah, just kind of prep it, you know, a crushed stone, just level it as much as we can. But try to keep it as simple as possible.
So no excavation?
There'll be excavate, just, just getting, prepping it for the, just to level it out basically, but as simple as we can make it.
Any porch, any porch, any questions on the porch? Don?
No.
Nothing?
Looks nice.
Yeah.
From my view, it will be perfect.
This is going to be on their southeastern side of the structure down here, where I made structure.
You have anything else?
That's all I have.
Public have any questions?
The applicants are actually on as well. If you got any questions for them.
No questions at all? If you have any input at all? How are you?
No input from us unless anyone has questions.
No, not at all. There's no questions from the audience either. So I think we're good. This could be one of the quickest questions we've ever had.
Well, maybe I have one. Remember, when do you anticipate breaking ground on the project?
So the shed is a prefab structure. And we took a bet on the permitting process and made a deposit on the shed and it's being manufactured. I think it will be manufactured within seven weeks. And then depending on when we can line up a someone to, to basically level the ground and put the gravel in. We could, they're going to truck in the shed and, and basically drop it in place. And then the, the porch is sort of at the whim of the contractor who we haven't checked in with at the moment, but we, we've got a place in line with them.
Late May, then my guess would be sometime in May, start the, just figure the old deck down and start rocking stuff late May or early June. You know how that goes.
We'll be looking, we'll be looking at April 22nd to vote on this. So it should be right now. I see no problem and afford, no problem at all. Anything else? Do I have a motion to return the workshop?
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
He comes. Good afternoon. Again, all right. This is April 8th, 2025, meeting of the Castine Planning Board. This meeting will come to order. This is a public proceeding. The public has the right to hear everything that is being said, unless the board votes to enter into executive session for remains Freedom of Access Act. The public also has the right to review any of the materials created or reviewed by the boards that relate to the board's deliberation, unless state makes that document confidential. Quorum for tonight, the following members, constituting the forum are Penny Carlin and Don Tenney and Chair, Vice Chair and Chair is Tom Comichello. The agenda tonight includes the following items. Approval of December 17th, 2024 minutes and also March 8th, 2025. So do I have a motion for December 17th, 2024? So we have a motion for December to approve. Okay, so in a second. Do I have a motion for March 18th, 2025? You want to take a turn? Okay. I have a second, second. For planning board procedure, the meeting will conclude no later than 4:30 or 5:30 unless the board votes to extend the time. Any remaining agenda items or discussion will generally be tabled at that time. Procedure, each application, the board, in this situation, we're looking at ordinances. The board will first hear from a from the CEO and then members of the public will be given opportunities. Please, all persons addressing the board should first state their names. Board will have an opportunity to ask questions of the applicant and any person to address the board. Standards and voting. The burden is on, basically in this situation, it would be on the burden on the planning board to demonstrate compliance with Castine Zone, your ordinance and state law. After the presentation and public comments, the board will discuss whether the, basically the board has met the the ordinances and the changes has been each applicable review criteria. Following a motion proposed by a board member and seconded by another, the board will vote on whether or not to grant or deny the changes that have occurred with the ordinances. To concur, the opinion of the majority of voting members present is necessary to, to act on any matter. The board asks that the, those attending the meetings for the application in this situation for the ordinances not leave until a final vote is made on the ordinance, both as a courtesy and as may affect appeal rights. The final vote, however, may be tabled through a subsequent meeting if the board determines it is necessary. Conflicts before hearing, any situation with the ordinances. The board must address any potential conflict of interest. Does any board member have or believe they may have such a conflict? In completeness, the board must determine if the ordinances and the board has jurisdiction to hear the application or in this situation, the ordinances and has standing to apply and the ordinance to complete has been provided. All the information required under Section 9.6 of the ordinance. Vote to concur, jurisdiction, standing and completeness. Do I have a motion? Second? Board may now review the merits of the applications.
Okay, you want to start in section, Article 5, Section 5.5? First change being an update to footnote two of that section to strike 10 feet or no less than the abutting property with the least setback or it's actually not, it is striking, but adding to that, which would be 10 feet or no less than the abutting property with the least setback, this setback reduction only applies to the side of the lot with the abutter encroachment.
Now, this is concerning the commercial vision.
Yes, in the commercial district. Now, the question is, would you all like to motion second? And then discuss and then let me go through these? So that you could do these and approve them as we go through? Or this or not approved, depending again how you want to do it?
All right. So we're basically looking for a board to approve this.
Do you approve to recommend this to the test?
Do I have a motion to recommend this? On the second, all of them.
Then what I would recommend is go motion second and then discussion. You can kick it over to me and we could discuss and then you could like, like discuss as well if they've got anything to add to this.
Still the discussion. Is there any discussion for the public? Any input? Want to, do you have anything else on that at all?
Yeah, just for the public's awareness, and it seems to be a very narrowly focused change, and it is. If you've got an abutter that is abutting to the property line historically in the commercial district, the historic interpretation of that footnote has been that that becomes the new setback for the entire lot. And I don't think that was the intent. The intent was, because you could have a cascading reduced setback throughout the commercial district. So we kept the spirit, which was that if somebody historically has an abutting building next to the lot line, then you could build up to that lot line as well. We did receive some input from Michelle Robinson on this issue. She has a point, which is that maintenance and other appearances on a structure could further encroach into that reduced setback. I've yet to see that in practice in the town of Castine. Propane tanks and the like are governed by solid fuels board and by different zoning or different ordinances or different state statutes, not ordinances, different state statutes. So you couldn't put a, a a any solid fuels there. So it's not a problem in evidence. I think her further point in her email to the planning board was that she advocated to change the zoning to in Items 16, 17, and 18 of Section 5.4 to force property owners to to maintain the ground floor of their properties as commercial in the commercial district, which would be in line with the, not the most recent comp plan, but the comp plan before that. Although there is something in this stock comp plan that also wants to stimulate that type of activity. I would suggest to the planning board that that item be tabled until the comp plan implementation committee and take that up because that needs to have multiple listening sessions with the town. And as a reminder, the town's already been down this road once before and the town voted it down. During the 2010 comp plan, a similar suggestion was made and it was not accepted by the town. So I do believe that Michelle is right in that she says that once a commercial property is transitioned to residential, it doesn't go back to being commercial. You've lost that as a commercial front. And that is provable. You know, you see that all across the country. Anecdotally, I've spoken to many businesses, about many, several business owners in the, down in the commercial district and the businesses kept failing and they kept losing money. And so they transitioned to housing, which we also have a crunch for housing. So I don't know what that answer should be for Castine, but I believe that the comp plan implementation committee would be a more appropriate venue to have the listening sessions with the town and then suggest that to the planning board after they've done their work.
Now, for example, if it does get changed, which you're seeing in a couple, a couple of our buildings already. It could go back as being grand fathering for enough. It's just changed. It can't be changed again.
No, I mean, that's just change of use again.
Okay.
That's not a, it's not like it's a huge and heavy lift. You could change it back, but I can't tell you a property owner that would probably do that because the most of their, the, the properties that have been transitioning from pure commercial to residential are gaining revenue by that change vice where they weren't before because businesses were failing.
No question. I mean, I agree with her. We do have a small commercial area. And we do have a college in town. We could look like dormitory or faculty facilities.
And you know, that's the other issue is you, you, we've got a statewide, but you have a, a housing crunch here in Castine, in Hancock County writ large. So every little bit helps. And you'll, we'll see that when we get to the ADU section because I want to have a talk with the planning board about the ADU section when we get down there. But you know, which problem is the higher priority? I don't know, other than I know that we've been through down this, the town has been down through, down this road before and they did not vote to approve it. Would, would, would that change this time? Maybe. I don't know. But I think a more comprehensive listening sessions with the community on this is, which is what the comp, the comp plan implementation committees purview is would be a better way to go about doing them.
So you're recommending that we table this, table off, table this?
No, I think this small change still stands. But I think the over, the, the higher issue is should the town try to re-stimulate ground floor mixed use buildings in the commercial district? And I think that's kind of a separate distinct issue. The setbacks being one, but then the, the other is not one that I would recommend that we go down take up as an issue. I would not recommend to the planning board to take that up as an issue. I'd recommend that as an issue that the planning, or excuse me, the comp plan implementation committee. We need an acronym for that. Comp plan, the CPIC. Comp Plan Implementation Committee. That's it. I'm calling for the CPIC from here on in. They should take that up.
So basically we're looking for a motion for this 10 foot setback. And we could also then make a motion to put it into the comp plan. Additional, additional information.
I mean, if you think that the input has validity and that it is something that you think that as a planning board needs to be looked at by the CPIC, then yeah, I would say that that would require a motion in book.
But approving this now wouldn't preclude an eventual decision.
No, not at all.
And, and, and or would it even restrict?
The planning, the planning board is the administrator of the zoning ordinance. So the comp plan implementation committee asked to circle back to the planning board with their recommendations for planning board change, excuse me, zoning ordinance changes before they go to the town. Or it could go directly to the select board. But then it requires a higher bar for, for passage. So the way this would work would be the comp plan implementation committee is appointed by the select board. They do their work. They come up with all the zoning ordinance changes that comport with the new comp within, and then it comes back in front of you all.
So if, if one of those thought that this was not helpful to what they decide they want to have done, it would have, it could, it could get changed to whatever they think would be the most important.
Zoning ordinance changes, changes all the time. Or it should, we just haven't done it as much as we should over the years.
Right. Question for all. Any other questions? Anything from the audience? You put it all. Scott, Penny's thing?
Well, I mean, I, I've lived this story for my entire life. I've had businesses in first floor, more than one building down there. Recent history, there's a building that I still own, Fort Flag, and that was commercial on the first floor several years ago. And I rented it, the, the, slightly inside of it to somebody who was going to do commercial business. They had it for a year, never paid rent. I mean, just never paid rent, not a bit. And then I had the church on the other side, the uphill side. They rented that. I didn't think it was like $811 a month. And now I get $700 a month per bedroom. So that's $2,100 a month down there instead of 800. And then the, the other one, I never got anything. And that's a two bedroom, but that's, you know, that's another $1,400 a month. And then around the corner, there's another two bedroom with another $1,400 a month. So the three ground floor apartments that totaled several thousand dollars a month. You can't take that away, just so you know. Yep. It's called taking by law and you can't do that.
Yeah, nobody's looking to take anything from anybody.
Term is taken. The legal term is taken and you can't do that.
Yeah. But, but should say MMA builds dormitories and, and we don't need to house students anymore or rent? And, and now it's more advantageous to you to sell some commercially, sell something to the, the new people who are here. You are allowed to turn that back into commercial.
Unit 11, which is top unit, they pay me $2,100 a month or they could have to borrow.
Or, or whatever, for, for a commercial.
For a commercial business.
And, and the church chose to leave and it sat in for months before he made the decision to even go the route that he did because he didn't just like hop on the bandwagon and to change it to residential. He, he advertised, he kept that space open and there was nothing coming. He had to make some margin.
Yeah, remember, I owned Fort Flag, the gift store. And I can tell you that the community did not support it enough to keep it open. They would drive Blue Hill to the gift shop shop over there and bring stuff on the castings that I was selling in the gift shop. I mean, it's just, it's just not conducive to the building. I've put probably $250,000 on that building in the last four years. And all for residential.
No, I, our population doesn't really support a lot of businesses. That's, I mean, but the population, I don't think we utilize the population from the colleges, which if we should. For example, one proposal in 2010, we proposed to basically take the kids' meal tickets there and have them be able to use their meal tickets for the community restaurants. In that way, it would be year round type stuff. That went nowhere. Absolutely nowhere. And everybody thought it was a great idea, but you have a thousand students over there that if we could get them utilizing us, our business would better, we would have a lot more success with our commercial area.
It's not just here. You look at bus score, you drive through a day and a half and the storefronts are all, not all, but a lot of them are nothing there. And McCloud's is closed in and Glendon's is closed in or being sold and trying to be sold and it's just the way things are going today.
Any other questions? Okay. Do I have a motion to approve the 10 foot setback? And I'll just read the whole thing. So 10 foot or no less than the abutting property with the least setback. This setback reduction only applies to the side of the lot with the abutter encroachment. Do I have a motion to approve that change? In 5.5?
I think to approve that change. Close that change.
I'm sure it is not as quick.
I didn't. Print the next one up, but the next one is uh, a change to Article Six, Section six point two-eight signs. And because this is such a minor change, uh, it's item nine. And that would be just adding signs identifying contractors on a construction and a adding. Added or landscaping site, just so you have a lot of landscaping contractors to put stuff up, so that's a. A very minor addition.
Were, were we originally eight square feet for sign now? I noticed that was five, five square.
Five square feet. Okay, so the next.
Does he need to vote on that?
I would recommend it.
Right, a motion to approve the uh, the signs.
Addition of contract of landscaper signs to the sign.
I have a motion, I have a second here, all your favorite. Surely, that's. Looking at the uh, ground square foot of floor area.
Yes.
At the next one, number three.
So, this is a. Recommended change for me to the planning board. Because in the inter- interim since our last work session. I've had a third. Applicant come in, as applicants often do, asking about what's allowed, what's not allowed, can we sit down, let me show you our plans, et cetera. With. An accessory dwelling unit off neck. Uh, if you remember. The Daimali Edwards. Uh, I don't know if that even came to the planning board because it went right to the zoning board of appeals, but Daimali Edwards uh, was uh, the old. Uh, biggie house on the Castine Road where they wanted to put a. Eleven hundred square foot accessory dwelling in it over the top of a, of a garage. And we went, took it to the zoning board of appeals looking for a variance, um, because it was outside the bounds of our standards. Thousand gross square feet. They were on four or five acres. And. I'm duty bound to deny it because. Didn't meet the standard. But. It was eleven hundred, it was a hundred feet over. And the zoning board of appeals upheld that denial because it was a hundred square feet over. But what I submit to the planning board and I submit to the town is a bit accessory dwelling unit on. Four or five acres off neck Castine. Why does the town care? If it meets the setback requirements of thirty feet, it's on plenty of space, they've got off plenty of space for parking, et cetera. Um, I've recently had another uh, possible applicant come in and they wanna put an accessory dwelling unit over top of a garage. It'd be roughly twelve hundred square feet. Gross square feet, the way our zoning ordinance reads is gross square feet, so it's measured from the outside wall, so. You know, if the entire structure is thirty by forty, it'd be a twelve hundred square feet, even if that's not living space. You know, code allows us to subtract a little bit for stairs that go to a bottom floor because it's a, a shaft or an open space that would go to another floor. But they wouldn't meet the standard. But that's a two-bedroom accessory dwelling unit that is not going to be built or would have to be, you know, substantially altered. Uh, on a six-acre lot. And so, you know, the point being is, is that I, I believe that the. Accessory dwelling unit standards need to be scaled by village and district. I think a thousand gross square feet is a good standard for Village One and Village Two. I think in Village Three where the lots get substantially larger. You could probably go up to eleven hundred. And then in the rural district, you could probably go even bigger than that, and I put down twelve hundred. And so what I'm recommending to the planning board is that. What used to read was in uh, item one of uh. Section six point three-three accessory dwelling units, A one. It would read, it reads now, an accessory dwelling unit shall have no less than one hundred and ninety gross square feet. One thousand gross square feet of floor area. And shall consist of no more than two sleeping rooms, one full bathroom, one half bathroom. One kitchen eating area and one living sitting room. What I'm submitting to the planning board is a change that to accessory dwelling unit shall have no less than one hundred and ninety gross square feet. Of floor area and no more than. Uh, colon, one thousand gross square feet of floor area in Village One and Village Two districts. Eleven hundred gross square feet in a Village Three district and twelve hundred gross square feet in the rural district. No ADU shall consist of more than two sleeping rooms, one full bathroom, one half bathroom. One kitchen eating area and one living sitting room. And the reason why I'm saying that is because it's had, the town and Hancock County and the state have a housing crunch. And this would be the third applicant in the last five years that. Had, would not be allowed to build what they want to build on plenty of space in a rural district. Which is six bedrooms that we didn't get built. You know, s- three apartments, six bedrooms. So. I'm recommending to you all to scale this, and I don't even know if these numbers are the. Correct numbers, if not larger. But I would recommend that we look at that. Hopefully it's up to the town.
I don't, personally, I don't see a problem with that. I really don't, and we have, there's a lot of ordinances that we have. With the difference Village One, Village Two, and then rural, I mean, we have a number of municipalities like that. All right, that are, are different, so.
You have a scaled setback. You have a, you know, it gets progressively larger as you get more rural. Uh, so the, you're right, there are plenty of, of examples of, of scaling a. The size and setbacks, et cetera, for.
Yeah, this is a precedent setting, I mean, we have, it's sort of, it would, the number of different areas.
I wouldn't, at this point, recommend changing the amount of bedrooms. But. I think that that is something that the co- plan implementation committee could look at. Because to me, this is a very simple change, this is a minor change. But if the co- plan implementation committee crunches the numbers, which I know the co- plan committee did. Crunch the numbers and see what our housing shortfall is. This is a way that they could uh, at least start nibbling around at the edges of that problem. If you expanded what an ADU could be off neck Castine.
And we also have situations with the ADUs. Because of the associations that we have throughout the community. And so, I mean, they have their own limitations, so like, for example, Wilson Point. We would not have an ADU at all, or. Technically, we can't rent it. We can build apartment like I did above my garage. But that, so technically, that's an ADU.
It's an ADU, but you can't rent it because you're covenants.
That's right. And, so that's, that's where that sits.
Then subdivision and subdivision and association covenants would still supersede our zoning ordinance. Because that is a voluntary association by the property owners that you volunteer to adhere to once you buy.
Put that in uh, writing.
That actually was taken up to, I don't wanna say that was taken up to the Supreme Court because that uh. That is the one thing that really does supersede local, one of the few things that supersedes zoning and state law in some instances. Uh, are those association covenants because in a voluntary association, you agree to it when you buy.
Any, any other questions? Do I have an approval or require a motion to accept the changes? In me. I guess I should read the whole thing, we can, we make a motion. Hundred ninety gross square feet. Of floor area and no more than a one thousand gross square feet of floor area in Village One and Village Two. Districts eleven hundred. Uh, gross square feet in Village Three and District M twelve hundred square feet. Uh, on the rural district, no ADU should consist of more than. Uh, two sleeping rooms, one full bathroom, one half bathroom or kitchen. And eating area and one living sitting room.
Discussion. Now, Tom, before you, does anybody in the audience wanna discuss that?
Uh, do we have any? Any good questions or?
And keep it parliamentary.
I'm taking notes, trying to do that, but uh. Okay, if there's no other questions or anything else. That will vote all the favor. Number, number three, no additional off-street parking space is required for an accessory dwelling unit. The town of Castine Traffic Ordinance will govern street parking. That's. That's basically the town of Castine Traffic Ordinance will govern street parking, that's the change.
I, I put that in there as a consideration for the planning board because. It is a weakness in what was LD two thousand and three that they say that an ADU doesn't require off-street parking. The problem is, it doesn't, it also does not take away. Our local select board's sole authority on the traffic ordinance, meaning if somebody could build an ADU. And say, I don't have to provide off-street parking, park on the street, and then. Uh, our traffic enforcement officer ends up ticketing the heck out of those tenants because the. Traffic ordinance hadn't changed. So the point being is, and I, I really, and I went round and round with DCD and others on this when uh. That I don't like that, that the way they did that in the law because it's basically like build an ADU and get ticketed. Or allow your tenants to get ticketed, so I. Put that in there so that when a developer is looking at our zoning ordinance, and they do. That they can see that, okay. What's the traffic ordinance say on Green Street, what's the traffic ordinance say on Water Street, what's the traffic ordinance say on Perkins Street? Before they say, oh, I'm gonna put an ADU up and house. Two MMA students or three MMA students or whatever. So I just put that in there for clarification for anyone that was looking at our zoning ordinance.
Just as you're saying that, and Scott, being, being a traffic person and so forth. Our commercial units. We usually say they have to have at least two parking spots.
They don't say anything until, like, whatever year it was that they decided, yes, one per unit.
One per unit, one per commercial unit, okay?
Well, not commercial, residential.
Yeah, no, I'm, I'm saying.
Yeah, it doesn't apply, and at least then after two thousand and four or something, any new. Uh, commercial or any new residential property in the commercial district had to have one parking space per. And I think we've taken some steps as a town to. Alleviate that crunch somewhat by not necessarily having it on a push notification for, hey, no off-street parking on. This date, we got a storm coming in. So you can park on the street over the winter. It helped out the MMA students probably more than anybody because, you know, they could park on the street through the winter and just. Look at their cellphone and we got a storm coming in and get their car someplace else.
Out there they would.
Not all of them are doing it. But it's better than it, I think it's better than it used to be. Uh, point being is, is that. We haven't seen a huge boom in ADU construction. So it's not necessarily a huge problem, but when somebody walks into the office and says, hey, I'm thinking about building an ADU on Perkins Street. I'd like to have it baked into the zoning ordinance to say. You might consider off-street parking. I can't force you to put off-street parking in there, but that, the, the select board is under no. Push to change the traffic ordinance because you wanna put an ADU in either. Right, so. It, it allows, it puts something in the zoning ordinance that can, that can tell the developer. Don't, don't screw over your tenants upfront, right? So. That's.
There's gotta be a better way. I mean. If you're gonna add an ADU. Of course, every property there must have some type of parking. Associated with you, correct?
Or not, if it's a new ADU by the state law, LD two thousand and three stripped our ability. To force the off-street parking if it's an ADU development.
I could build an ADU on what is now my off-street parking.
Oh, really?
I mean, I might not have a setback, but, I mean, one could, I'm saying, so.
But that law stripped the ability of the town to force a developer to put off-street parking for their prospective tenants.
Any questions from the public? Nothing, okay, uh, anything from the board? I'm still not crazy about this.
Well, there are, there, there are potential, if there is no place where people are. Well, that's, um, there are safe, there are safety applications.
Yeah, and that's, that's the concern.
And that's not to say that the select board, if. An ADU were to be built someplace where there is an off-street parking, couldn't change the park, park, traffic ordinance either. But I just want the developers to understand that. When they. When they build. Select boards under no, you know, there's no requirement for them to change just because you decided to build an ADU there. Um, we've had people in certain streets on town, in town that. I wanna convert my summer residence to a year-round residence, but there's no parking, so. I'm gonna put a bunch of money into this, this property, but then the select board needs to change the traffic ordinance to allow us to park on the street where we can't get into the fire truck through. And really didn't go anywhere because it's like, you can't. So that's the point that I'm making on that is that just put that in there so that everybody can understand upfront that. The traffic ordinance still does apply, even though the state law strips our ability to force you to change, to put. Uh, takes away our ability to force somebody to have off-street parking if they build that.
Well, it's unadmitted, but comes on, you know, and all this on you now to make sure that the. Traffic control and, you know, is. Is be done to, to deal with it.
Again, you know, this is not a problem in evidence because we haven't seen a huge building boom of ADUs. Especially on. However. Like to get rid of the black swan events before we see him.
But with the commercial. Like in town here, with the apartments now, and the kids parking, like. They're having problems or they're moving, I mean, there was one woman that used, that came here to move a couple of years back. She would have to move her car. Right, from even down on the dock. How much time and so forth, if that's still happening.
No, it's mine, if you're talking about overnight parking?
Yeah, overnight parking.
No, because there's no overnight parking. Regulation.
Oh, because of the winter or is that all the time?
It's all the time, it only used to be in the winter.
Okay.
And now it's, you know. That's gone too, it's just a push notification.
It's on, there's a storm coming.
So nobody's out there moving cars around, you'll drop me around times, it's like, it was around the time.
Okay.
Overnight. All the time.
Couple of years ago, when she approached us, it was. I think for her, you were on the board at the time. And she would have to go down and move the car and so forth, then she was a young individual. Make change with this uh. Do I have a motion?
I move the uh. Item three, uh section six thirty-three. And I'm the addition of the town of Castine traffic ordinance, we don't want street parking.
Back to number five, new construction of an accessory dwelling unit, city Castine Village one, two overlays on that. require utility board technical review to ensure Castine sewer water system. Is adequate to meet the increased sewer and water demand.
Motion and. You want a motion and second that, and then we go into discussion and then.
Can I have a motion to approve? Number five.
Discussion?
Discussion?
Sorry, I'm a rule follower, Tom.
I'm just a little slow.
So for the public, this is a, a change we are advocating to the town because. Again, the law, what used to be LD two thousand and three, it's now public law, one inch twenty-one, chapter six seventy-two or something like that. I believe that's correct. Uh is. One thing that it does allow the town to do is regulate. ADU construction in zones where our sewer and water system simply could not handle the extra units. Uh that law allows, if you have an empty lot, it allows you to put up to four accessory dwelling units on that lot. So if you put eight bedrooms on a lot on the Tour Street or on Madakawando. Uh I think our sewer system could handle that load, but I do not believe that our water system is adequate for that increased demand. Uh because we still have two-inch iron pipes over there, same thing would hold true on uh Western Court Street. Portions of Perkins and portions of water, I think we would be good with an addition of a pump going this direction, but there are. Places that we would want to have. Qualified professional engineers, take a look at that just to ensure that our public safety water pressure remains. Adequate. And that we could actually service that increased uh, that increased demand.
You think from the audience?
It's fair to say that this impact would protect us from the state's effort to um. Increase housing in places where. We couldn't, couldn't handle it.
Sure answer was, is no. I don't think so, because the state could always, always come back and say. Uh we need to develop a system that impact fees. Where it would say if you want to develop, then. You are authorized to develop, but you have an impact fee that forces the developer to upgrade the system. Uh that's what they do in California. Uh that's why. Things don't get built there as quickly as anywhere else. Um, do I think it's? Safe to say, no, I, I'm seeing. Laws come out routinely that are. Chipping away on the rule, there's a new one that says that uh. It's being debated now that says that. Well, it's already outlawed by the state, they passed a law that says that you can put a, what used to be called a mobile home. A trailer, now it's called manufactured house. Uh you can put a manufactured house anywhere you want to on any empty lot in the state of Maine now. Whereas we used to not, we have a subject, we have a mobile home ordinance that outlaws that here in Castine. That's gone. The state took that away, so. I think that this is a way that we can at least. Restrict. And over-usage in zones in Castine where we simply know we cannot handle that increased development. Um. It also might put it back, the onus on the town to, well, we need to. We get back on track with our uh comp plan, not our comp plan, our uh master infrastructure plan. Um but. Would I, I would not characterize it as safe to say. It would characterize it as trying to keep our hands on the reins.
Could we? For example, you use the. Example of four, if we turn around and said we force our water restore, it can only handle three units. Even on that lot, could we limit it that way?
I think so. Yes. But again, I don't think that the planning board. Nor, I mean, I certainly do not have the expertise for that, I would want to get a professional engineer to do a technical review. To say what can you do? And then have that discussion with the developer.
Any other question? Article five or article eight, eight point one. We're looking at the first change was alteration of existing buildings and structures or land or folks there of. Including, this is. The area that has changed, but not limited to. You want to do the entire permit?
Or? Yeah, why don't we just go through the entire section if that's good with you all?
Yeah, that's fine. Good point. Uh B, interior renovations which change the structure design. C, interior renovations exceeding one hundred fifty square feet in an area of ten thousand dollars uh in total. Project costs. Ground or roof mounted installations or solar power, power array. We're looking at parking, uh creation or expansion of roads, driveways or walkways, parking areas or retaining walls and patios. Basically, the change was parking areas, retaining walls and patios. That's what it falls under article eight. Any questions? Do I have a motion, motion to approve the changes? Both the changes. Right, discussion? No, discussion, um.
Mind if I jump in here for the public, Tom? The big change here is interior renovations, interior renovations will now require permits if they meet a bar of one hundred and fifty square foot. Or ten thousand dollars in total project cost, the planning board used. It's called the bathroom rule as a. As a kind of a litmus test on whether or not you should trip over into having a permit in. The average bathroom in the United States of America is sixty to hundred and twenty square feet, so something that, but you can eat up ten thousand dollars. Renovating a bathroom fairly quickly, so hundred and fifty, ten thousand dollars is kind of like the average cost of renovating a small room. But anything more than that requires a permit, and the number one reason for that is you could have a property owner that doesn't change the design of their building. But then drops two hundred thousand dollars into renovating a property. And the town wouldn't know anything about it, more importantly, the tax assessors wouldn't know anything about it, so that's the biggest change for them.
Well, it's article eleven fees. And basically uh changes check or credit card payments to the town or fees shall be paid in the form of a check payable to the town of Castine. The purpose of the fee should be clearly indicated on the check, any check returned by a bank for non-payment will immediately void. The application in any resulted permit. Castine will accept credit card payments either in person or over the phone, it will be a credit card surcharge increase in a fee to defray the. Credit card processing cost. With uh. You want to just hear the eleven point one right here, or you want to do all of them?
I'd recommend that you go through the entire fee and then we get to discussion and then I can explain this very quickly across the board.
Right, eleven point two. Building permit fees and non-transferable, non-refundable base fee of fifty dollars. Plus a non-transferable, non-refundable. So that's additional for much uh. Much accompanied by the building permit application. And number two, looking at non-transferable, non-refundable fee.
I'd recommend you use motion in both, motion and second for the entirety of article eleven and uh. I, I, we get to discussion and then I can explain all this really quickly.
Do I have a motion to accept article eleven? Over for discussion?
Okay, for, for the public, the uh. These changes that we're talking about here, one, the credit card fee and the surcharge is just getting casting into the twenty-first century and. Adding that there is, we can actually take credit cards because people often ask that. Uh base fees, what used to cost twenty-five dollars have, has been doubled. And the reason being is we haven't updated our fee schedule since two thousand and nine. So that's double, planning board fee goes from a hundred dollars to two hundred dollars, base fee of twenty-five goes to fifty across the board. The biggest change in article eleven is when you get down to the. Uh. The building and construction cost table, is that is the extra fee that the town pays based on the value of the project. The CPI in the northeast region has, since two thousand and nine, has gone up by roughly forty-eight percent. Um now. As the conversation with the planning board. You can either take what the CPI in the northeast region, which is basically all of New England. Tells you, or you can believe your lying eyes, and we know it's gone up more than that uh here in Castine. However, this is a, actually it's gone up forty-two percent, I misspoke, not forty-eight percent, forty-two percent, this is. This cost table is a fifty percent across the board uh increase in the. Unit cost per square foot for all building projects in Castine, so we took forty-two percent, rounded that up to fifty. And went with that as the increased cost. For your awareness, we did look at. Not doing a purse, or not doing the cost table and just uh doing a per square foot. If you've got a thousand square foot project, it would cost you fifty cent per square foot. Um but when I pulled all the permits from twenty-three and twenty-four and looked at how much it would have cost. What you ended up seeing is a marked increase in the medium and the small projects. Whereas the large projects, while it was more revenue, if you had a square foot model. You take it from a million dollar project with a two thousand dollar building permit fee, we go to twenty-five hundred, whereas a. You know, medium-sized project would go from five hundred to nine hundred, or five hundred to eight hundred, so. We stuck with what works, which is this. We just increased by fifty percent across the board, which is the CPI plus eight percent uh. As an update since two thousand and nine, since the last time this was done. There's no questions?
Yes.
On eleven point one, do you? At the beginning when it says all fees shall be paid, did it say all fees may be paid in the form of a check? Because to me, it sounds like I have to pay it in a check within later, it says, but we will also accept credit.
That's a good catch.
So, do you need to make?
If, if you guys were part of that.
Basically, um. Article eleven, just, that's one of all things, if you move on to those. Anything else I have, except the ones. All in favor of article eleven? That's it?
No, you have uh. Article fifteen definitions.
Do you have a copy of that?
Um I didn't because there's so, such small changes, I didn't print those up, I just saved, saved the uh. Um there are two changes. And one would be adding home generators to essential services. And the second would be a definition for retaining walls. Which is a straight lift from the Department of Environmental Protection's definition of a retaining wall. Um. Which also dovetails back to the article eight, eight point one, because. A retaining wall is a structure by the definition of a structure in the zoning ordinance, but if you read, literally read the, what is required for a permit. A patio, a retaining wall did not require a permit, and people would read that and say, oh, I don't require a permit because it's not listed out. Right there, which is why. I put the but not limited to and then added the retaining walls, patios, etc., because they are structures.
Now, question. Plus we have so much waterfront. A bulkhead that has to go through the state, so it also comes through us or comes through you for permit?
Yes. Yes. A bulkhead, if it's not an emergency repair and it's less than fifty percent, doesn't require a uh, a permit, but anything above fifty percent. Um it would require a uh permit by rule. If they're not changing anything, and if it's permit by rule, once I get the permit by rule back from the state, I can approve that, it's in the land use table that I can approve that. Unless they're doing a bunch of earth moving and something behind that retaining wall to re-anchor or something like that, and then it would probably come to you all.
So that was the central services. That's where the home generation.
And generator, yes.
Um, retaining those verticals. And that was, that was two feet, right, before it comes to us, it has to be above two feet?
No, that's inside the historic preservation uh district. If it's a wall above two feet, then it becomes the historic preservation commission's uh purview, if it's beneath two feet, it does not.
It doesn't have to retain anything. And it's just a wall. Right, in the historic district.
Yeah, a wall. Yeah, a wall is, by our zoning ordinance. Outside of the historic district, a wall is synonymous with a fence. Stonewall can be built right at your property line and it's synonymous with a fence, if it's a retaining wall and retaining something, earth, whatever. It meets the definition of a structure and a new structure on a lot requires a permit. So I thought it would behoove us to have a definition for retaining wall in the zoning ordinance. And it's a vertical or near-vertical structure constructed wood, concrete, masonry, or rock designed to retain soil upgrading from the base of a wall.
In the last one, you said you said non-conforming? Was that another change?
Yes.
I'll do the non-conforming use of standards of the Castine ordinance shall apply to a lot with a non-conforming use.
Yeah, and that's setbacks, et cetera, but, you know, a non-conforming use is the use of the property, we have historically had a few of them. The market is the top of the hill. Up at Windmill Hill is a non-conforming use, it's outside of our commercial district, but it's been a gas station, it's been, you know, a lot of things throughout the years. But that's a non-conforming use, the, uh. The Manor Inn, uh, when it was an inn and restaurant, that was a non-conforming use, so we've had several of them, but. The setbacks, et cetera, all their, all other standards still apply, just the not, it's a non-conforming use.
They, we were discussing last night. About the community hospital.
And that's another one, that's a non-conforming use, but if. Uh, I, as an example, the community hospital, if they were, as they're going through their. Uh, upgrades, uh, to that building, if they decided that they wanted residential, some residential. Property in that, well, the zoning ordinance, this would actually, actually play to that, the zoning ordinance would allow that because it's zone residential, even though. It's institutional or commercial. So it's a non-conforming use presently, but if they decided that they wanted to put, uh, visiting nurse apartments or something like that. They could do that because the standards in the zoning ordinance would allow that because it's a residential zone. Kind of a circular way to get there, but it is. I think it is absolutely correct.
Any question? Any questions from you all? We have low, hold it there. We're looking at, yeah, we're looking at, uh. Four. Yeah. Southeast, abstractly. It was, yeah, we said that we would build it. So that's a true. Which is good. Okay, or famously, I, I, okay, it's the, uh. Anything else, Sean?
For me?
Well, that's right, we were gonna discuss, uh, Michelle's letter.
I thought we already discussed that.
We did earlier, you know.
Um, Sue would like to know, I think the, the planning board has already made the decision that they would like these just put together in one one article.
Yep, the select board were very interested about what came out of the required public hearing though on that, so that was just one element of. The last bit of confirming how that's gonna be structured in the warrant, ultimately, the select board have the authority of how that would. Be structured in the warrant to go to the town vote in, on, um, Saturday, June seventh. But they wanted to, this was gonna be the last bit of the zoning ordinance amendments. Finding out what took place at this public hearing, so if everybody's all good with it, we'll bring it to them. That the general consensus is that you guys are all okay in coming out of the public hearing to have it as a one article. And if it approves and it approves all these amendments you guys discussed tonight, and if it gets turned down, none of these amendments go get implemented.
Is there anything you, you need from us or?
No, I'll just take it to them, I mean, if they want something, Sean can officially, as code of written consent, tell them, but Roberta was gonna, I think mentioned it, but she may have forgotten, so. I will pass it along to them because we're signing, we gotta get to print, we're going to print, so this was one of the last lingering elements to finalize our warrant.
Anything else? If not, I would ask for a motion to adjourn. Sound good?
Sound good?
Second, Paul Curry?
Hi.
Thank you. Thank you, thank you.
Thank you all.
Thanks, I'd be worried.
Missed something like that. You know, it's the stuff, these are the twigs on which a town is built, right?
I will tell you guys that I, every time I read the zoning ordinance, I find something else that needs to be changed, and I was reading today. And the. Mobile home performance standard in our zoning ordinance is completely illegal by state law right now. But there was no time to circle back and get it into this year's, uh, on this year's warrant, but we're gonna have to, because.
You know what, if there's a lot in the middle of town and I wanna see a mobile home go between two million-dollar houses.